This meeting will come to order. Hammond City Council, July 9th, 2019. Roll call, please.
Councilman Andrews.
Present.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Present.
Councilman Wales.
Present.
Councilman DiVittorio.
Present.
Public hearing, none. Now we'll move into our regular session. Roll call, please.
Councilman Andrews.
Present.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Present.
Oh, present, sorry.
Councilman Wales.
Present.
Councilman DiVittorio.
Present.
Councilman Leon.
Present.
I should please stand and ask Councilman Andrews to lead us in prayer.
Eternal Father, we just thank you right now for who you are. Thank you, dear heaven and Father, that you woke us up this morning, closed in our right mind with activity and use of our limbs. Just thanking you for your daughter and son, Jesus, who died upon the cross, that we too would have access to the tree of life. Father God, we ask you to continue to bless our city, continue to bless our personnel, continue to bless our fire department and our police. But I don't want to end it here, Father, but continue to bless our administration and continue to bless our city council as we continue to move forward to better our city. We thank you that everything will be done decent, order, and pleasing, and in your sight, where you will get all glory, honor, and praise. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Let's call veterans and active military to please render the proper salute.
Our pledge is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which sustains, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, as for reports, are there any council reports tonight?
Again, I'd like to acknowledge that on next Saturday, from 10:00 to 6:00, in Martin Luther King Park, District 1, we'll be having our first annual Family Day in the Park. We're going to have a nice day planned. Those of you that like to play dominoes, we have a domino tournament. Those of you that like to play spades, we're going to have a spades tournament going on. We're going to have a three-on-three basketball tournament as well, and we will have a barbecue cooking contest going on that day. For those of you that think you bad on the grill, I want you to come out and sign up for that. We have three different categories. We have real chicken and sauce. You could participate in one, or you could participate in two, or you could participate in all three. However, all proceeds that are generated on that day is going to go to a scholarship fund that I have put a committee together to run in my district for intergraduating senior in 2020 that lives in District 1 could apply for this scholarship. If they meet the qualification, they can receive this scholarship. Also, to provide extra funds for summer camp programs, things that kids that live in the district, parents cannot afford to send them, we're trying to put something in place in order for, to make it happen for them. So if you're not doing anything, come out, bring your family, bring your tent, bring your barbecue pit, or whatever you would like, and we'll be out there next Saturday in the park.
Thank you. Anyone else have a council report?
I do.
Devon.
I want to thank Robert Morgan. He did a good job on Palmetto Street during the ditch. And so y'all know, I don't give out too many thank yous and say they do a good job, but he really did a good job this time. But I have a problem with Whitney. I met with her three, a month ago, and I still, I haven't asked for a new sidewalk in the district yet. Well, yet I can't get the grass cut on the sidewalks that I do have. So, and one thing about the grass, we all know, it gonna tell on you because the grass gonna keep growing. So I want to sit there and leave that out there for y'all to know what problems we're having right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Devon. Anyone else?
I just want to report, I've been having some drainage issues on Brandy Lane and Timber Lane, and I wanted to tell Chuck and Webb that thank y'all for, you know, answering my calls all the time and coming out there and being pretty responsive. I got the pleasure to wake up, or try to wake up Webb this morning early on a little issue I wanted to show him, and just want to thank y'all for helping out and trying to get some solutions for that Timber Lane issue that we need some testing on, and hopefully we can work that out and help that home motor on the end of Timber Lane. Thank you.
Steve.
Kind of piggyback on Devon, but I want to thank Robert Morgan, too. We had some, the Woodbridge Association had a few little issues that they wanted to get taken care of, and I mean, Robert went out there in a couple of days and got it all done, and it looks great, so I appreciate his efforts.
Thank you. Mayor reports. Lacey, do you have anything to report?
I'll do, just a couple of quick items. On July 12th, this Friday, there's a Tangi 150 photo exhibit that's at the Arts Center. These are all photos that have been submitted in preparation of the 150th anniversary of Tangipahoa, and that photo exhibit will continue to grow. We'll have another one on August 23rd at part of Hot August Night, and then the last one will be in September. So if there are other people who have photos they would like to contribute, the procedures are all described, it's just hashtag Tangi 150. The exhibit is from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. and is free. On Saturday, July 13th, and I know that Chelsea might be here in a little bit just to discuss these a little more, they're having the Downtown Chalk Walk, so there'll be lots of stuff happening in our downtown this Saturday. They're also having input on their master plan for the DDD. That's at the Aveda Institute from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. And then just a reminder that on July 26th is the Back to School Bash from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m., and it's at Hammond West Side Montessori School.
All right, thank you. Are there any new businesses in the audience that would like to be recognized? Now, for the minutes of June 25th, 2019, need a motion?
Motion to approve.
I second that motion.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Wales.
Aye.
Councilman DiVittorio.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Resolutions, old business number one, a resolution to approve the attached 2019-2020 holiday closing schedule for non-municipal fire and police personnel. Loretta Severin.
Hello, everyone.
I'm Loretta.
Good, good. The attached document is the recommended holiday closing for 2019-2020 fiscal year for non-civil service employees. Currently, we do not have All Saints' Day nor President's Day, and we wanted to coordinate with Tangipahoa Parish holidays or, and city court.
Okay, questions?
So do we have a number, I just kind of want to ask some questions. Do we have like a certain number of holidays we have to have per year, or is there a limit? Or we, how do we range on that?
According to the ordinance, the current ordinance, we have 14 holidays in addition Presidential Election Day, but this year we're asking for President's Day and All Saints' Day.
So would that be 15 and 16?
Yes.
So we'd be up to 16 holiday days?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
Any other questions?
Yeah, yeah, of course. So look, is this for the fire department and the police department only?
No, no. The first one is for your non-civil service.
Okay.
The one you're interested, and a whole lot of interest.
Yeah, yeah, because who I'm concerned about, the little people. Okay, that's what I want you to know.
Anybody here on the public that wants to ask questions on this? Any other questions from the council? Pleasure with the council. Motion.
Make a motion to approve.
I second that motion.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Wales.
Aye.
Councilman DiVittorio.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Motion approved.
New business number one, a resolution to approve Friday, November 1st, 2019, All Saints' Day, and Monday, February 18th, 2020, President's Day for municipal fire and police civil service employees for the 2019-2020 fiscal year. Loretta.
Yes. Civil service employees are not governed by our holiday schedule, although we have the same holidays. For the civil service employee, they actually get the day off. The holiday itself is their holiday. But since the city is adding All Saints' Day and President's Day, we also want to give it to our, our fire and police personnel.
See, my question here is, is when we're giving it to the actual, you know, the city, non-municipal, non-fire and police, they actually probably get the day off as in they're not there, correct? Or they're, or they're getting paid overtime on that day?
No, they get the day off because they're not there.
Okay, but now, if we go ahead and do the fire department and the police department, obviously they're emergencies, so they don't get the day off, so we'd have to pay them time and a half, I guess, or holiday pay?
Yes, except for your administrative staff. They don't, they get the day off. Those employees scheduled to work that day will get time for when they work in eight hours or the time period they work for that holiday. So if they're scheduled 12 hours, and that 12 hours fall within that day, then they'll get 12 hours of holiday.
Do we know how much that would cost the city? Extra pay as far as time-wise, that day?
No, not all day.
I'm going to begin to try to estimate that.
What was it, was it compensated in the budget?
It should be. I think, I think it will be covered because what we tend to do is we have at the end of our each budget line items, we have some give and take depending on who might retire or who might have vacancies during the year. So that's generally speaking how we have handled it. If they need to, by the end of the year, they will move money to accommodate in salaries.
It'll be absorbed by each department.
Yeah.
Out of their budget.
Yeah, I mean, I would probably like to know, I mean, how much is that going to really affect, you know, the budget on that time and a half that we're paying?
I can get you an estimate for tomorrow.
Yeah, and benefits and everything else, I mean, you know, kind of when you open it, and days like that, it kind of, you know, it snowballs into other, other issues maybe. Is this, do we add days pretty much in the past? Is it common to add more holiday days?
We have added days in the past, yes.
Yes, we have in the past. We have added. As a matter of fact, we used to have All Saints' Day off.
Right, so last year, All Saints was on Thursday, so you probably had it.
Right, we used to have that day off. It's been several years, but at one time we did have All Saints' Day off.
But the police and fire, they had to work though.
Yes, yes, but they also got paid for that day. If they worked, they got paid the regular rate, and then they got paid regular work for the holiday.
We can pull the last payroll because July 4th would be the same way, and that'll give us a good example of how many people were working and how many people were paid. So we can pull that and give you an estimate for tomorrow.
Okay.
Any other questions? Anyone here from the public on this? Pleasure with the council.
Is this to approve this, or?
Right.
I would, I would probably like to table it really or so until we get more information on, on what we're approving, so if we want to, yeah, probably, yeah.
And those days are later in the year anyway.
Yeah.
Do you have any more questions?
Yeah, motion to table.
Second. Second.
Councilman Wales.
Yes.
Councilman DiVittorio.
Yes.
Councilman Woman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Motion approved to table.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Number two, a resolution, number one, accepting $11,700 historic preservation fund grant to re-survey the Hammond Historic District, two, agreeing to a cash and in-kind match of $11,700 to come from the Historic District Commission, and three, authorizing the mayor or his designee to complete and sign related documents. Charles Borchers.
Good afternoon. This is a follow-up to one that we presented to the council, I think just a few weeks back, well, more than a few weeks back, probably several weeks back. We're pleased to learn that we've been awarded the grant, so we're just asking for the council's approval to go ahead and execute that grant contract and start the project.
Any questions from the council?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Councilman Wales.
Aye.
Councilman DiVittorio.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Number three, a resolution supporting the submission of a $12,000 Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant application to purchase new and replacement tasers for the Hammond Police Department. Charles.
This is a grant that we tend to apply for at least once a year. This year, unlike years past, we'll have probably multiple opportunities to apply for this one. There was some delay at the federal level with the funding, and so both the local program, which receives funding from the federal government, and our direct grants, which are federally funded, are kind of backed up this year. So we'll have like probably about three or four opportunities to apply for these grants. We met with the police chief last week, discussed this grant and the others that we're looking at in the future. One of the priorities that he has is replacing the tasers that are currently assigned to officers. We have some new hires that are coming in who are going to need tasers. A lot of the tasers we do have were purchased back when Chief DeValle was chief, some of which were before I was here, and that was seven years I've been here. So it's time to replace some of these. We're asking for the council's approval to go ahead and submit that application and hopefully get some funds to do so.
Any questions from the council and from the public? Pleasure with the council.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Councilman Wales.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman DiVittorio.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Thank you, Charles. Number four, a resolution to approve change order number one on electrical upgrades and emergency generator Chevy well, project number 11803, for an increase of $3,600. Lacey.
This is a very straightforward change order. The attachment describes in detail what it is, and we have these funds in reserve for contingency, so we're still within budget.
Like to hear it.
Make a motion to approve. Second.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Councilman DiVittorio.
Aye.
Councilman Wales.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Number five, a resolution to authorize the mayor to enter into a services agreement between Tangipahoa Parish Government Animal Control and the City of Hammond for $60,057 from July 1st, 2019 to June 30th, 2020.
All of the following contracts are going to align with the budget appropriations that were made with the adopted budget. This first one is based on our, our city's population, and that's how the parish decides who will pay what. So this was appropriated in the budget that you just approved.
Any questions? Anyone here on this matter?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Wales.
Aye.
Councilman DiVittorio.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Number six, a resolution to authorize the mayor to enter, enter into a cooperative endeavor agreement with Crime Stoppers of Tangipahoa for $9,383 from July 1st, 2019 to June 30th, 2020.
As described when we adopted the budget, Crime Stoppers basically operates our tip line and also helps with marketing and with youth crime prevention programs. So this allocation is the allocation that was appropriated in the budget.
I don't remember that, why is, what's with the number?
That is the number that they have requested for several years going, and until they changed their request, we're going to.
Okay.
So that's been the same for a while, that 93083?
Yes, sir.
All right, any questions or comments? Pleasure with the council.
Make a motion to approve. Second.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman DiVittorio.
Aye.
Councilman Wales.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Number seven, a resolution to authorize the mayor to enter into a cooperative endeavor agreement with Child Advocacy Services, Inc. for $10,000 from July 1st, 2019 to June 30th, 2020.
As described again with the budget, CASA helps us not only with child prevention services, but also with that frontline forensic interviews that happen after a child has been in an abuse or some type of violent situation. So these funds will go to support them in those efforts.
Any questions or comments?
I've got a question.
Yes? State your name and address for the record, please.
Joseph Dominic, 811 West Morris Avenue, Hammond, Louisiana. My question isn't relative to the proportionate amount of funds that are being proposed to be expended for this resolution. On your agenda, it shows that you have, that you're wanting to allocate $10,000 towards CAS, but also look down and you have $110,000 for the Discovery Center. I'm familiar with the bodies of work that both of these entities do, and I just was curious as to why there was such a large disparity in the amounts, because I know Child Advocacy Services has a monumental task in working with the youth that they, that they deal with.
Lacey, do you, is there a response to that? I mean, from what I understand, that's what CASA asked for.
I mean, we, we had all these meetings before. I mean, this was the first time I seen you up here, you know, bringing it to a point when we had all our budget meetings and everything else. We had all our budget work session, you know, before, you know, when we started figuring all these numbers out, so that's why, you know, nobody's ever said anything differently about need more money or requesting anything.
Sure, I appreciate your response, Councilman DiVittorio. I was not familiar with exactly what was going to be discussed at your budget work session or when that happened. This was just something that I picked up on, on the internet, actually today, and looked at it, and I just figured I'd come just to find out a little bit more, because I work with kids, that's what I do, and it just struck me as a little bit odd as far as the amount of money that was being expended on one versus the other.
I think it's a fair question. I would, I would say, just, I mean, we're all new here, but this is what they asked for. They came to our budget session, and Rob Carlyle, I actually met with him before that, and there was never a request for more, so I'm assuming that this fits with their budget with other funds that they received in fundraising. This is what they've asked from the city.
Possibly. I guess, being a citizen, what I was just looking at, too, is the amount of money that's going towards a nonprofit. The Discovery Center is getting significantly much more money than any of the other resolutions that you have on your, your agenda tonight. All right, thank you.
You have a question, sir? How much more money you think you need?
Well, it's not what I need, but I know $10,000 is probably just a modest request from Mr. Carlyle. I think you could probably use a good little bit more, especially if the Discovery Center's getting $110,000. That's just my perspective.
You keep harping on that Discovery Center, but there's other, other, you know, the city spends money on a lot of things, so, you know, you say you work with children, but I mean, that's, that's children-related as well, too, the Discovery Center, so, and if you look past, it has been reduced over the years as far as what they were getting, the Discovery Center. So that is something that the city is working on right now, and I think maybe, there may be, you know, room if Mr. Carlyle would, you know, express some needs for something he's missing out on, and I'm sure everybody, the council and city would look into it, but...
Sure, I, I can, I can see your point. I'm not harping on it, I'm just using it as a point of comparison. And you're right, the Discovery Center, that the exhibits they have there do very well at helping young children with fine motor skills and things like that, but I'm looking at some of the issues that happen in the city of Hammond, where you have incidents, where you have kids that need advocacy, you have forensic interviewers that are dealing with kids that have been physically, sexually, and emotionally abused. That's a problem versus just trying to enrich youth. So there's two different issues. I think we need to address the issue that is, you know, more of a problem versus just un-nice-to-have, so to speak. But again, that's just my perspective, and I was just wanting to get some clarification on the disparity, and it sounds like y'all have done your homework on it, and thank you for giving me the time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question. Just to piggyback off what he was asking. Pamela Haynes, 116 Marilyn Street. The question I have, did the Discovery Center ask for that amount?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
So we're on the CASA, number seven, so I need a motion from the council.
Make a motion to approve. Second.
Second, Councilman DiVittorio.
Second.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Wales.
Aye.
Councilman DiVittorio.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Number eight, a resolution to authorize the mayor to enter into a cooperative endeavor agreement with the Tangipahoa Voluntary Council on Aging for $50,000 from July 1st, 2019 to June 30th, 2020.
The main provisions that this allocation pays for is operation of the city bus. That is all operated and maintained by the Council on Aging, including staffing and the buses and all that, so that's what that money goes towards.
Questions or comments?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Councilman Wales.
Aye.
Councilman DiVittorio.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Number nine, a resolution to authorize the mayor to enter into a cooperative endeavor agreement with the Tangipahoa African American Heritage Museum for $25,000 from July 1st, 2019 to June 30th, 2020.
This is to assist in maintaining operations for the museum. They also offer a summer STEM camp that several of our children throughout the neighborhoods have benefited from.
Questions or comments on this?
Yeah, I got a question. Now, did they ask for the $25,000? Did the city request to give what they were going to give them?
They asked for the $25,000. I mean, they, basically, everybody asks for the same amount that they have had the year prior. We haven't had anybody really change their amounts. I don't know, I mean, when I, when I asked them for that supporting documentation that we put with the budget, that was the information that they provided.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Pleasure with the council.
Make a motion to approve. Second.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Wales.
Aye.
Councilman DiVittorio.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Ten, a resolution to authorize the mayor to enter into a cooperative endeavor agreement with the Louisiana Children's Discovery Center for $110,000 from July 1st, 2019 to June 30th, 2020. Lacey.
In light of the discussion that we've had at the podium, I will emphasize the mayor's proposed budget was to reduce this allocation by $20,000 and to go with $90,000. The council approved authorizing $110,000 to this museum to support their educational exhibits and to continue to market the museum as a tourist attraction.
Comments? Was the, I think whenever we were doing the, the budget here, one of my concerns was that we come up with a plan for lowering it. You and I had some conversations about why we didn't want to put a schedule, because that may obligate the city for future money past a year, because this is just for one that may obligate the city for future money past a year, because this is just for one year, and then, thank you for putting in there a reduction for next year so that everyone is aware that we are reducing it. I, I was a little confused because I heard that the city didn't reach out to the Discovery Center and say, this is what we're proposing, does this work for y'all?
That was not true.
Okay.
When did y'all reach out to them?
I don't know exactly when the mayor had meetings, but I know that the mayor spoke with Ms. Rubique, and I know that the mayor spoke with Mr. Ricotta, who's on board member.
So what is a target number? Do y'all have a target number, or is it just a?
The target number is what the council will also approve with that.
I mean, y'all keep bringing it down, so I was trying to figure out, obviously, you would have to have, I guess, a target number, or do y'all have a button, you know?
I think in general, it would make more sense if all of our nonprofits aligned in some way. There is a great disparity that has been pointed out several times at different meetings, at different times. It was pointed out at the last meeting by citizens here. We get calls from other nonprofits asking about why certain people get certain monies. A lot of them are easy to explain because they handle city, what other municipalities would be doing in those services. So whether that is a child prevention service, or whether that's forensic interviews, whether that's a crime tip line, those are easy to explain, operating a city bus. It's harder to explain these are economic development benefits that come from the two museums.
I would like to see some discussion, obviously, after this, because I do think that you have done what I've asked, which is to lower it for next year so everyone is aware. But I think that there needs to be a discussion with what our bottom line is and how we get there. Is it in three years? Are we down to $50,000? Is it, is it five years and we're down to 25, we're matching both museums? Great, but they're operating a business which relies on city funds. You have arguments both ways on that. So we have to do something to help them get off of the city funds by planning on a scheduled, a scheduled plan.
And I think the problem is, from what I gather, is it started a certain way a long time ago. It had bingo money, a lot of more donations, a lot of more revenues. So if you start a business way up here and you continue to bring it down with no preparation or any goal, no business really functions the best that way, and you don't want to take away from somebody good unless you have a plan to work for that, for that plan of reducing.
Yeah.
And working with that, and manage with the director, and seeing if they are overfunded or if there is ways to cut them back.
Mm-hmm. When the ordinance was changed in late 2015 or 2016, if I recall, the, there was lots of discussions, and there was discussion about how the museum was going to have to close its stores. Well, that didn't happen. So I think, you know, having an honest discussion about where everybody wants to prioritize funding. I think the other thing that's important about all of our contracts is this is a one-year allocation. I think a lot of people have become, you know, they believe that they will have this allocation every year, and that may or may not be the case. Heaven forbid something happened to Hammond and we have a natural disaster or some other thing to deal with in terms of priority. This money could all be dedicated to another capital improvement project or something else that is the priority for that year. So that's something else to keep in mind with, with all of these allocations.
Any other questions or comments?
Motion to approve.
Wait, sorry. Hold on, we have.
I'm sorry.
Frank DiVittorio, 102 Woodbridge Boulevard. I just, you know, y'all said that the reason that y'all couldn't put a schedule in was because there's concern about, about obligating the city. I mean, we do five-year capital outlay plans, we do other planning, y'all, earlier, we're talking about a master plan for the DDD. I mean, everything has a plan. I don't, I don't think there's any reason why you can't handle, I mean, you got a lawyer here on staff. I mean, I don't think there's any reason why you can't telegraph, here's the plan, you know, all of these things. You know, y'all were talking earlier about different, different organizations getting different amounts of money. Why? You know, it's, it's probably a global thing needs to be looked at, but certainly, you shouldn't be handcuffed, afraid to tell people where they're going. I think that was actually part of what the problem was this year, when y'all cut, they found out in the budget session, or when it was proposed or disclosed or whatever. And I know there's some dispute as to when that happened, but at the end of the day, saying, you know, the target is here, we plan to stage it down over five years, three years, three, whatever it is, that, that's not an obligation, so.
I agree with you, Mr. DiVittorio, on that aspect of that. At least they'll know where they'll be headed.
Exactly.
And, and it...
Right, I mean, like...
...snowball effect, at least they'll know exactly where they're heading. That'll give them time to be able to plan, to be able to stand on their own and do what they need to do. It's just like Lacy said, if we have a natural disaster or something, that money could be pulled, so what do you, what are you going to do then?
Right.
So I, I agree with you totally on that, and with everything that we're looking at, I think we need to start looking at it a little bit closer in different ways where we're putting money to make sure that we're putting it in the right place as well.
Exactly. Maybe, I mean, like, if you raise their, if they raise their admission a dollar, well, if they do it at the end of the, you know, if they don't know until a month before it happens, well, that dollar's only going to generate so much money. If they got 50,000 visitors a year and they raised it at the beginning of the year, well, there's $50,000 that fell out of the sky, $1, you know? So, so it, it's important, I think it's important to tell them, look, you need a three-year plan, you need a five-year plan, you need a, whatever it is to get to, we're taking you down to wherever everybody else, whatever y'all decide. But why is it a secret?
Mr. Frank, what you just said, with the Tanjapohoa African American Heritage Center, they cut their money and they said nothing.
Right.
I know they cut their money.
Right.
They cut their money down to 25, they was getting them 50. And when Mason Foster was off, they was getting more than that. They had an open checkbook.
Right. And that, and that's exactly what, like, I don't, I don't, I'm not familiar with the situation, but I don't think, I think, again, when you're in an emergency situation, it's one thing to have to make it, you got, you know, when it's an emergency, all cards are on the table. But if you're talking about, it sounds to me like there's a plan in place to bring these to a certain thing, you shouldn't drop it on them at the end. The African American Heritage Museum, the Children's Museum, CASA, anybody. Like, if you know you're going somewhere, if you've got a goal, and me, I'm fiscally, I'm a fiscal conservative, you know, there's, personally, there's some questions as to any of this spending, but at the same time, I don't think it's right to just, you shouldn't find out when the budget is released a month before it's approved, for anybody.
Yeah.
Unless it's an emergency, you know, emergencies are different, but...
Everybody understands it.
Right.
I'll add, one thing that the administration has discussed is treating a larger pool of funds as a grant pool, and having everyone apply for that who would, who would wish to, and having them describe their programs, or how they would spend those funds, or what they would do, and then having a committee appointed that could look through all that and decide what money would go where and what allocations, how they would be used. It would be treated just as a competitive grant program, the same way that the city applies for grants. Again, not dedicated, not, not insured every year. Those funds could all change based on allocation and based on program design.
And to that point, Lacy, if that's something that you're really, you know, the city's really looking at, then that's even more reason why we need to have a plan for each one of these agencies so that they can start working towards whatever that, whatever that number is, because you can't just come up, you know, at the end of the year and say, well, we've decided to pool the money together and have grants, and then you got people scrambling. So you got to consider what we're currently doing and look at what's the new plan going to be, and how many years is that going to take to get us there? And everybody should be on board with that, or at least notified.
I think part of that is having a new council and making sure that we're all in agreement with how we're going forward. Part of this year was challenging because we didn't know where the council also wanted to go. It's a path forward for all of us to take together.
And I know the comparison kept going from CASA and the Children's Museum, but the representative of CASA came to the budget, and that's pretty much what he asked for was, was $10,000. So we have to go by what they say. This Children's Museum came asking for the $110,000 that they needed to survive. So obviously, we're going to, you know, look into that, just like if any other organization came to us needing more money. But the representative comes and asks for a certain number, you're going to agree with what they're asking for, and that was $10,000. There was, there was no comparison there. We could compare, we're going to compare to African Museum, to the Children's Museum, everybody, that wasn't there. I mean, if they came to us, the representative over there came, doesn't ask, we would have probably looked into that as well, too. So it wasn't, it wasn't any comparison like, oh, CASA needs less than Discovery Center. Representative came to us in the budget session and said they needed $10,000, so...
I think that we're making good progress, right, with this idea? So I would like to see us table this and possibly put it, you know, get with the Discovery Center and put in a schedule. Attempt it, you know? We, when is their first payment bid? When is our deadline for this?
Usually, they submit a reimbursement request at the end of the month, so the end